Twenty-three meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First order is starting the vote call, starting with Mr. Papilio.
Capello here.
Indiana.
That's your right. Alan President, listening here. I also have President Dennis Price, who is the Town Plan. Robert Rudin, Houston. Planning and planning use administrative assistant, and John Hutchins, code enforcement, so administrator. Next item is review and approval of minutes on April fourth. Does anybody have any comments? Questions? There's one.
So we did not have a format or last meeting, which were. We see of. The virtue. But it goes from the April fourth meeting.
April fourth.
So since we get Tommy.
Bye, Dennis. Anybody else have comments, questions? I have one correction on line eleven fifty-one. Because my vote was yay.
Well, okay.
Take one second, maybe you say something.
A second. Capello.
Indiana.
That's your right. And who's still on? Yeah. Yeah. Thanks.
Just a few more things to know, some training opportunities. The NHMA Right to Know Training for Board Members is coming up next Wednesday. If you can make it, that would be great. We will provide you with instructions. It's for board members and town staff. Um. And if you haven't already, this is carryover from before. If you weren't able to make the April twentieth meeting, the Office of. The State Planning Office has all of their webinar series on there. If you want contemporary pressure training. Also, if you were not able to make the twenty-ninth meeting, which I know is on a Saturday. For changes to the planning board, that's also on their website. So if you need one moment, take some time to do that. Also, you'll see that we have passed updated, or I should say amended, zoning warrants from. County meetings. Places in the books. Oh, another business we need to discuss, a planning board member for the class six. Robert Rose, her. Committee.
Do you have a volunteerism?
Did you? Bob has graciously volunteered.
Oh, nice.
Um. What you guys devote up, so. I guess so. Oh, you need to do that now or other business? Didn't want to forget. Not sure when they're going to meet that. Okay. That's all I have at this.
Okay, next item, we are going to move. Item number eight A, which is the. Last six part of the. On to the head of the line.
Planning Board. Chairman, Mr. Driscoll, members of the Planning Board, I'm here on behalf of Mary Elliott, representing her on property on sixty-three Birch Lane. I've. Submitted a package for each of you. First page is what I'm going to talk about. And the other pages are photographs. An elevation of the plan that she's proposing. And the final two or three pages are, were added by Ms. Elliott. That show photos of her house and her lot. In that spiral staircase you just saw. So what we're talking about is. The application that she has in front of the code enforcement officer to. Change the staircase in her home from a spiral staircase to a conventional staircase for safety. In doing so, we realized that we ran into these categories, one, two, and three. Category three talks about, as one word says, volume, which brought us from a one, two, or three. Once we moved from a one, two, or three, we realized that. The requirement is for the applicant to contribute up to twenty-five hundred dollars, up to ten percent in this case, which would be twenty-five hundred dollars. Where the proposed construction is twenty-five thousand dollars. So the category three requires road improvements, and I quote, "If the existing road does not meet the minimum road standards for class six and private roads." So we provided photos for its length from three different vantage points that include the driveway entrance to sixty-three Birch Lane all the way to Young Road. Birch Lane has a paved surface varying from seventeen feet wide to twenty feet wide, as noted by the road agent. The road agent wrote, and I quote, "The road meets the private road standard over eighty percent of its length." The fire chief and the police chief wrote, "No comments or concerns." The residents of Birch Lane meet biannually to discuss repairs that may be needed to the road. And a single drainage culvert. This year, they cleaned out the inlet to the culvert and added crust stone to prevent debris from clogging the invert. All of the residents of Birch Lane contribute three hundred and fifty dollars annually each, creating a reserve for repairs for a total of forty-two hundred dollars. They also contribute two hundred and fifty dollars each annually for snow removal and road sanding. The residents of Birch Lane care about the condition of their road. In the category three has the word volume, which I mentioned previously, which has moved this application from one, two, or three. The reason the applicant, the applicant is requesting a permit is to improve the safety to the access of the second floor. The existing spiral staircase is a poor design with a history of causing permanent physical injury to the previous owner. The applicant has hired a designer to draw a plan for replacing the spiral stair with a conventional stair that meets current code requirements. The existing ceiling height above the spiral stair is too low to allow for a conventional stair to be built. A headroom clearance of six foot eight inches is required by code. You'll see that on sheet A three, which is the plan drawn by the designer. The design on sheet A three shows the existing dormer, which will be removed and replaced with a wider and taller exterior wall. For new rafters to set that will raise the interior of the ceiling height, providing the headroom needed for the new stair. The plan requires that the frame, the frame of the single slope roof be raised seven foot six inches and widened about ten feet. The volume that will be created for a new stair is seven hundred cubic feet. The area that the taller wall will create is about sixty-eight square feet. The new roof design does not exceed the roof line of the existing roof and does not create an odd appearance in design. Because of the condition, as well as the ongoing care, the property owners already provide Birch Lane. There is nothing to be gained by imposing a ten percent assessment for this application. With that, does anyone have any plans?
Well, it does seem the road could be brought up to a hundred percent in terms of the width. I mean, there are places where it's narrow according to this.
Yeah, I guess twenty feet, that would include, they're looking for sixteen feet of paving and two-foot shoulders on either side. The road is paved up to twenty feet wide in both areas.
But not all of it, but we could finish the twenty percent. At least having wider, wider road, even if it's not paved, it could be extended. I mean, as the road agent talked about, the width of the road could be brought up to standard by pulling the dirt away from the edges and installing gravel.
Which could be done, but not for twenty-five hundred dollars.
They would only need to do twenty-five hundred dollars worth of that work, is the way I read it.
So potholes, you mentioned potholes.
That's why I provided the photos. If you look at the photos, you'll see the potholes are really not holes. It's, it's like two or maybe three layers of pavement have been put down, and the first layer is, is missing in some areas. So it's not really a pothole, it's missing pavement. I don't think there's a better word to describe that than a pothole, though. So I understand why you used that phrase. But the road is in very good condition. The fire chief has no comments on his report. And the road and the police chief has no comments on here to report, so the fire chief is satisfied with safety.
Well, the road agent said there's no place for fire burners to turn around. So he, I think he was commenting on behalf of the fire chief.
Well, at the end of the road, there is a large area to turn around. So after sixty-three, you go to sixty-three, it ends, and then it, it, it becomes a T at the end. And there's a large driveway on the left, and then a huge paved area on the right, all paved.
Is that a few parking sits that they're. Highlighted or anything except with a. Doesn't please. Next one. That orange place has highlighted orange, is that where to turn around? So it's time to, well, down like you.
So. That's somebody's property, though?
Um. Yeah, it is. The road, you could see the A to turn around down there with you on some property just.
They get an agreement to do that.
First lane is a private road anyway, so it is private property. So the town never goes down that road for any maintenance issues or to do anything.
For safety.
It's safety, so that's why we felt that the fire chief and the police chief. Their comments were what is most important to the residents of the road. That the chiefs feel they can get in and out of their. Fire apparatus and all without any problems. I think if the fire chief had a problem, it's here, I'd love to speak up, but I think if the fire chief had an issue with it, he would definitely. Definitely say that, you know, need somewhere to turn around.
Just for clarification for the board on the staff side, when I put no concerns or comments, that's what they tell me that they have to. I just, like, if I, for some reason, if there was, weren't any comments, I would say I did not receive anything from them.
So their words were no comments, no concerns.
Just to clarify.
And the granting of the waiver is actually something that select board would do. Um, yes, it's just what you think as an advisor, you two would select to get that decision.
Anybody else have a feeling about the twenty-five hundred dollars? You have any?
Well, you just, John just mentioned that ultimately this select board will make the call there.
Well, we have to, we just have to do a recommendation.
All we have to do is shift it to him, I think.
Right, just thinking about it.
With a recommendation.
I personally were. So adding living space, bedroom, or.
It's pretty much the same.
Traveling, exactly.
Up into the roof of the little.
And I said, I have the changes that I talked to the selectmen about the last meeting, we're going to try to change. I have another one, those are adding no volume, but they're adding a bedroom. Technically, they'll come under our category two, so they won't have to do any real activities. This one kicked under category B because of the definition clause, so that new change would make a person having a bedroom come under category two. Something like this would come under category two by that simple word change.
What, what is meant by volume, if I, if I can ask?
I didn't write the policy, but volume is cubic feet.
That's, that's how I.
I changed the word volume, I actually talked to the select board about it. And to change it to living space, which I think is more appropriate for what the reason is for the private roads.
Because.
The policy is still really does volume, it's not a big one. That has, that hasn't changed yet, waiver.
As John said, a category one or two will allow you to add square footage, a porch, a deck, without having any discussion about the road. Where she's doing volume for the purpose of safety, to put in safe stairs. The woman that owned it previous to her fell down those stairs, and she's crippled today from it, and that's why they sold the property. So she is willing to. Have this rectified and have a set of stairs to code installed, but it's going to take some headroom, and that's the only thing she's got.
If you want, like, as the applicant provided, like, as.
Propose.
And doesn't involve if you guys have any.
Yeah, I don't think. Is that some reason?
Apple, as proposed, says I comply with, I comply with option one, which it does. So I think we're deciding whether or not to waive.
Waive the option two, right?
Yeah, the road, the road agent said doesn't comply, so I agree it doesn't comply. So I think the real issue is that we waived, we go forward with ten percent or not.
Right?
They're basically saying we think it's, it's the road, or we think that you should give the waiver. And that's really the recognition.
I think, well, the road agent said it doesn't comply with option one, I think, I think we have to go with this recommendation.
Josh, you would like to go with the recommendation?
Yes, and apply the ten percent.
Andy?
Same thing.
Yeah, I'll stick with the twenty-five hundred, so. It's like it's four to one, that's a recommendation, can you stay with the twenty-five hundred? Not see.
Ready to.
Ready to, no, I said, I said no, she said no. Oh, right, okay, three and two.
I do, I turn this around, hold up.
Ready to. All we're doing is.
Yeah, all you're doing is making a recommendation, I understand, I understand. So you did talk about.
Like, what?
You did talk about, John, that the word, you're gonna, you guys are gonna work on a word, wording out these categories, one, two, three, and try to get them.
This, this board's not gone, there's a committee coming together, Bob's gonna be on the, well, he's volunteering.
Oh, that's right, I heard that earlier, okay.
So there's a selectmen that actually put a thing up, anybody that was interested on it, and I think they're voting on it in the next meeting.
Yeah, we haven't worked on the agenda until tomorrow, so.
And more people can volunteer until tomorrow. I'm not sure.
Yeah, but it might take a couple of months to get a change.
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna happen overnight, it takes time, we're coming out.
May third, application for consideration will be accepted from May third. There's anybody in the audience who would also like to volunteer? Can volunteer as a board member, or you can also volunteer as a resident.
If I can do board member, I'll do board member. I volunteer as a. It's a. As resident?
I already put mine in as a resident prior to.
Let's play it live in the night, Jim, but.
I think that's fine, yeah. I don't know, I just thought we'd find somebody. Yes.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recommendation for. Two, just so.
Take the ten percent.
Um, lots of coming to you guys, I think it's just a. Recommendation.
You really get it, you know, to want to vote already.
Yeah, it's not. Because it's not as far as an application.
It was about. Next item up is. Application, this is. Two forty-eight dash hundred dash two-three. The, this is twenty-three. This is a request to continue through June sixth, twenty twenty-three, ladies board meeting.
Just for the board, and I know you say in your packets too, but they're requesting continuance to allow for submission of additional application materials that were requested at the last planning board meeting.
I mean, is there a motion?
I make a motion to continue to June sixth.
Second.
Aye.
Vote call.
Again, aye.
Indiana.
Dump the gun there.
Hey, next one is. Next item is new applications, this is twenty-three, twenty twenty-three Old Settlers Road tree trimming, nine, seven, six. They request, they request to do June sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Chairman, the reason for the continuance for the RSA, it falls under different guidelines, that it needs to be published in a paper twice. And by the time they were, we figured application, application fee, it didn't help any, a two-time paper.
The.
So. That's what I said, sweet rap, yeah. Yeah.
I think the voting continues to June sixth, second.
Capello.
Indiana.
That's your right. Another, see, a road one, this one is twenty twenty-three Canyon Back Road tree trimming by Evan's. Be able to request continuance to June sixth, in the middle of the week. The discussion moves, and then I'll make the motion to. To one. It's your committee, David, it's June sixth, sorry. Favor?
Uh, Capello.
Indiana.
That's your right. How I, just go on. Next step, we have. Item. Sixty. This is two forty dash twelve dash N R dash twenty-three dash. N R dash twenty-three dash S R. Wayne Cavalli, Karen, and Lyndell, Kevin. This is the feature two. There we go. We go. Good evening.
Good evening. Ryan Cavalli from one sixty Young Road, Barrington.
Karen Cavalli, same.
Ryan Cavalli. So our, our plan here that we have tonight is to relocate the current residence that is on one seventy-eight Young Road, Barrington. To the old farm, the farmhouse, its own property. That. Farmhouse currently for storage and intermittent seasonal retail sales. And we want to put an addition on that structure, establish it as the residence with an attached A D U. While continuing to use it for intermittent seasonal retail sales. In the, in addition, we would like to modify the current residential structure, once abandoned, to provide restaurants for our peach customers and the guests attending events in the barn. With current rest for trailers. We plan to have ADA accessible restaurants for new spring harvest season, for nonprofit fundraisers, fundraisers, including our annual peach pancake breakfast that benefits our community food pantry and farm-to-table events. There's also plans on there for decks on a couple of the, on the links. He also plan to. Include in that. Current residential structure, state-approved kitchens for value-added items. For being harvested from a farm. So. Question, questions?
Well, it seems a state-approved kitchen would fall within the agricultural use. I mean, what, what kinds of things are you going to be? Kind of what you've done before?
Fruit and savory jam and jelly. Peach, apple, berry pies, we plan, well, we have plenty of apple trees now. Berry pies, we want to do small fruit, we want to get involved in blueberries and strawberries, so we would be growing them there. Peach and berry ice cream, salsa with and without fruit, and if we have enough apple trees in the future, maybe apple cider.
So that will all come from the farm?
And some of those things you can't do in a homestead kitchen.
The staff comments were. The road agent was concerned about some of these rocks and the gravel. Going down to the ditch line on the side of the young road. Suggested they do paving the first hundred feet of your road. As to the impact.
So, so we are planning to do an apron about fifty feet up, that's where most of the damage from incoming cars happens. They get on, when they get up to speed and it's been.
Been, right?
So we were planning on doing about the first fifty feet.
They know that the ditch line today was instead of a lot of water. Seem like it's still.
And they did meet, they did meet with the road agent last.
So they did, yeah, yeah, we met with the, Bob, with, okay, was that running?
Last week.
Yeah, last week. Close enough.
No, I did not focus marketing here.
And I believe when you were here before, you know, a number of months ago, you also addressed doing some things around preventing the gravel from coming down, and I don't specifically remember what they were.
We have put the, they grew the ditches in the driveway, which has helped considerable, it hasn't stopped at all, but it does, has helped considerably.
Should open it to public comment, anybody in the audience wish to speak to this?
Comment, we need to vote if the application is complete.
Should do that. Is there a motion to accept the application as complete? Make a motion to accept it's complete. I mean. Yeah, listen.
Capello.
Indiana.
That's your right.
Alan.
Who's the one? Comment.
I don't know if there's anybody here on the phone for again, application, however, the office have received a concern about. Received it, we received it today, and the board members have had a time to look in their email, but. The whole page of links, their overall. They, they're nothing, they're. I'm against it, it's birthday, but. There's concerns about the notice of decision. That was previously granted for the conditional use, unless it's not necessary for this application before they expanded their fine for venues. Along with the forest aid income, there's concerns about traffic. Believe this is in from the previous. For the events, I know that we had done not necessarily full traffic study for that one, that was just for like side mind, I believe. Those were the main comments. Nor the supporting material. And as well as a copy of the previous decision. For the board to take some consideration.
And for clarification, these were the hours we approved for this, right?
Then it was a decision?
Yeah, for the last one, yeah.
That was what was approved. I was asked what events meant, and I explained to the resident that it was anything outside of a review of like weddings. That's how it was labeled, because if you don't want to limit it to just. They got, got some people from other events that they wanted to, that may not be wedding.
Right, I thought, I saw the word anniversary here somewhere, so that would be another event, that wouldn't be a wedding.
Hey, those are public comment.
I see somebody online, a person that, you themselves are here to top for against the Young Road application for the peach farm expansion.
If you're referring to me, neither for and against, I'm wondering if the Zoom meeting was ever started, because it says the host has not begun the meeting.
You are in the meeting for the planning board meeting, is that what you're looking for?
Uh, the one that's going to talk about the tree trimming on Canyon Back Road and Old Settlers Road?
Yes, there's, those two have been continued until the July, or excuse me, the June sixth meeting at six thirty P M. It had to be properly advertised in a paper two times, so they had to ask for a continuance to do that. But it will be heard at the June sixth meeting at six thirty.
Okay, it would have been nice if the letter went out, because that's how we found out about it, and there wasn't anything on the town. Okay, it would have been nice if the letter went out, because that's how we found out about it, and there wasn't anything on the town website saying it had been. Changed. So.
It got, uh, they, they have to come to, or the meeting to say that it will be continued, um, the agenda mentions that they wanted to be continued, but I understand your concern. Um, but it's, should we make a present, never thought we'd make a presentation at the June sixth meeting, fans, your concerns.
Okay, I will. Be there for that, but I just spent a very frustrating half hour trying to figure out all the ways to get onto Zoom and not getting there, so.
See who's.
Thank you, and we'll see you then.
Okay, thank you.
In the. Peach.
Should you have to throw it on the waiver?
I'll get the.
I did.
Okay, I'm sure.
That's the way.
It's official, I'm gonna comment on being comments, I think.
Maybe they make it.
You know, I think that what looking for is a. As an agricultural businesses, it's like, I guess. It is good, John gave some care last time. They try to. You know, give us more background. When have I changed business? But the majority of my account might talk for their transitions or refactored. We have that discussion, things that. With this business going to more or more. Then. At some point, it's gonna. No longer fit that category, it's really not.
The classic one in New Hampshire is Apple Crest Farms. Hampton Falls, they're a giant operation near roadside stand is actually something the size of a small grocery store.
Yeah, which I think is only the requirements is fine, right, but if, if the majority of the income is not coming from agricultural. It's no longer an agricultural business.
Right, but they rely that they have the other sixty-five percent can be non-agricultural.
Or farm stand.
Yeah, and as I said, the definition of the farm stand was not the little thing on the street that it was to seize someone.
Doesn't. But that doesn't really apply to whether it was an agricultural business, but you could say fifty percent majority. You know, we, we looking at thirty-five, that's one way to go, you could reasonably go to, if the majority of the income is coming from agricultural, to be an agricultural business as well. So I think the, the question is. When does this? If we give approval for this, when does, when does it? Was it still approval for this? Versus when does it change to something else? There's something that we should talk about.
That would be easy. How did they gross incomes that they have to report?
Well, John mentioned last time, we're going to have a just about a development statement, so.
Yes, we don't have a way to do that.
Well, we could, we could put a requirement in as, as condition where. Where it transitions from the majority, something else, that's come back, so it'd be on them to self-report. Think that would be something as a condition I would like to see.
Hmm.
So, we can't have John looking into his financial statements, right, but we put in something where fifty percent of the revenue of the business. Is coming from non-agricultural uses, it's no longer an initial business anymore, that's come back and you ask for change. That would be something.
Can you guys get any help from uh, U N H uh, cooperative extension?
Yeah.
They have a whole thing on agrit- um, agritourism education program. That they run. They also have a contact person, Jesse Wright, I'm D N L, is in this business. Six oh three, 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 six, three, eight, seven, four. She can walk you through all of these details above, uh, for example, is an I R S form forty-eight, thirty-five, is a farm we want to do.
I'm sorry, what was the last four digits on that?
Um, thirty-eight, seventy-four. That form has that, copy of that federal form has to go into your, New Hampshire Business Profits Tax, for example, a copy, but that's how they watch what percentage is, you know, is. Related to your actual, what you grow and what is outside that. That would be handled. They also have um. Of course, that you can do when agritourism legal basics. It might not take too. Um, that's an eighteen page guide, I think she'll give send it to you for free. Just give you some background information on. Well, about how you balance this.
We're going to with John Davis, too, the term agriculture tourism, back and visit to work and farm. For persevering, they'll make our best studies and generally farmer environment, educational farm operations, active involved in activities of farm, finance for the farm operations.
So, so I thought, I thought when we originally did this, this wasn't, this wasn't tied to specifically agritourism.
It's not, that's why we got the condition.
I don't think there's a way to fall under that. So that's why I was saying it's not. That is not a committee. You know, agricultural income back. So as that business grows, at some point, let's say it exceeds the amount you're getting from the farm. You, you no longer have cultural business, you're something else.
Well, then what happens during the year, where we have a complete crop failure?
Like this year?
Like today, like this year, we have no peaches.
No, that's sad to hear.
I know, it's breaking our heart.
Well, I mean.
You know.
I mean, at some point, if the farm is no longer farm, it's not an agricultural business, it's not even a business, it's something else. And you can't, it approves the farm and then no longer be a farm.
Okay, that, that's.
Set a point.
So, so what is your concern, the bathroom or the state approved kitchen?
I think both of those are okay, as long as you're not cultural business.
Okay.
But when you're something else, when you transition to some other business, let's say hosting events. That's a different business, and it has its requirements. And yet, until you get it, it'd be approved for that. But if, when the business changes from agricultural to something else. Then your old approvals don't apply.
Are you confused? If, if I, I thought, I thought we were approved for events.
The um. We talk, I know a preliminary meeting doesn't hold the boards anything, but also the legislature, we ought, um, we could put a condition in there. Um, notes the decision, once they expand. Um, they come back. Or what exactly, but I, I put like a recommendation, like any additional changes that require application for a major site when reviewed process. I know that you're saying like, well, when do we get to that point? Um, we could always ask a legal opinion to find out what that point is, because I'm not sure if. You can always know, like you said, if they reach their.
I, I.
Capacity.
So, so is this worry about future developments of the property? Or what's current? I guess some people are concerned just for what you grow, what you do, what you grow, how you sell.
I think.
That's not where you're going, but.
That's the first that we've received.
Income received from agricultural business.
Yes.
Sources.
Yep.
When does it become a non, uh, when's, when's it no longer an agricultural business? If, if the majority of your business is the same hosting events.
Yeah.
Then you're not an agricultural visiting. And the things that you got approved for is an additional business, or you feel you, that becomes a problem.
I mean, where, where does it say that you notice a decision before that we heard agricultural business? That was, I, 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 I'm done, I'm confused.
We had a stair proof kitchen for that business.
I don't think he's talking about that, I know.
Okay, I, I am just saying that.
I'm a general. Agriculture. Other things are not allowed in the general.
Which, which I thought is why we had the conditional use premise.
For hosting some events, but at some point. The conditional use for hosting events. As or as it's accepted, it's simply used as part of your agricultural business, a supplementary agricultural business. John, you, I do very regularly for my own.
I, that, that was the reason why I had them come in before, so as a board, you can make a decision to have one showing it is no longer considered agricultural use. And that's the reason why they came before, so they could have that discussion with this board. Because if it's not an agricultural thing that it's part of their agricultural use, then technically they would have to go back to uh, zone board to get your lead, have mixed use business, because you have the business and the residential stuff all in the same ball. So that's the reason why we came before, because of the expansion of the agricultural use, and that's why I made out, well, we have the public uses, because it's a decision you had to make as a board, it's not a zoning decision that I made, that's. That's, does that clear up?
Do you think in our zoning, we need to clarify this a little more?
No, it has nothing to do with zoning, it has to do with the state's R S A on what is considered agriculture, and at what point, as Ron's point is, at what point is it no longer. An agricultural business that has that experience uses, because if you go to that, um, twenty-one, it listed other things that could be part of that expansion of agricultural use and still be agricultural use. And that's what you guys looked at when they were in your board, to come up with a decision, I think you had like a board pre-decision even then, with the board, because. I can see how it can go either way, I mean, it's, it's one of those. As a board, you have to make a decision, and sometimes decisions aren't easy.
I guess I was looking at the R S A also, where it says, um, item. B five. So, so that kind of expands it into aggregate, the state actually in the R S A talks about agritourism, which gives you a wider. Framework. Um, that includes preserving, providing meals to people. Um. Making overnight stays, enjoying your farm environment, educational tours you will do with people and so forth. You can bring, you know, always got to place troops in to show you how the operation works.
And I had that all highlighted, that's what you guys talked about that last meeting.
I thought that that was fine, you know, the money raised there, um.
I think, John, I, I think that's a question. Because if you look at agritourism, you could define that fairly narrowly and say weddings are not included in agritourism, because it's not there for the, it's not there for the farming, enjoying the farm, that, that actually used to farm involved in the farm.
Don't, 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 she did, well. So, so are we going over what was already. Already approved for last conditional use permit? Are we going back to that?
Well, you're expanding, as you get bigger and bigger, you start to change the. You know, or where you were before, with the. The event part was small. It was a concern, but now that you're getting bigger, and that part of the business is more of a concern.
Okay, so, so, so we, we came in here for the conceptual, and we cut a bunch of things out that we had in there, because you guys like. Or, or.
Some people.
Yeah, some people didn't like. So, we just want to add the bathrooms, if I can clear this up, our intent is to keep the farm open, grow the agricultural portion of it. Diversify. And provide more food to people locally, that's what we want to do, it's hard to do that when we have. Peaches that are, you know. Since about two thousand and ten, pretty much every other year, we've had a crop failure, for about thirty years, we had no crop failure from about nineteen eighty to two thousand and ten, now every other year, we're having a crop failure, we have to do something different. This is just part of it, I, 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 and, uh, keep trees a, a long-term investment, that's a, you know, a, a fifteen, thirty-year commitment. Every farmer in the United States practical, plus the huge ones in the Midwest make the bulk of their income from non-farm. And, and, and that, that's where we're at. You can't survive on two months worth of business, twelve months. If it comes down to what our intent is, that's our intent, we, you know, we, we want to keep the farm open, and I, I was reading in the, in the, you know, your strategic master plan here. The town of Barrington should endeavor to protect and enhance key natural resources in the community to find the town's rural characters such as scenic vistas and fields and farmland, it's, it's the last part. That's what we want to do, um, and it's getting a little harder, um, so this is just a part of our strategy to do that. The thing we approved last time by a vote of four to three, there's no need for engineering plans, the new expansion of the house, that's really definitely fine, they approved kitchen and bathroom. And porch to existing barn. Anything else required full and engineer funds. That's all this. The one closed yet, because you want to comment on the public comment, right? Hasn't been officially closed, right?
He plus public comment.
Okay.
And I, I don't understand. How putting two restrooms on is getting bigger. For every event, we have a bathroom trailer. That is a significant cost, right out of our profit. We're just changing where they go to the bathroom, it isn't getting any bigger, a stair proof kitchen provides us an extra layer of protection. For, for food production. That's, that's all that is, I, I don't, I don't see where it's getting bigger.
Which I think. Well, lots of regulations were framed, right, the state approved kitchen in the.
Well, we have an approval that they came in through.
I thought that's what was decided tonight.
Right.
So their formal vacation. Um, resulted from that discussion with the A D U, expand to the back, if the kitchen back and then. Of course, it's a big thing.
That we can turn the design frame, things like, you know.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know if there's split feelings on this, we could always, um. This is just suggestions to the board, if you'd always continue the case, we create a legal opinion more of like. When does it? Like, what's the threshold, when does it go over, and you could put some, something like that in a notice of decision. Um. Make sure that you're not arbitrarily just making sure we're following it correctly, if that, if that would make the board feel more comfortable making their decision. Um, that obviously after your decision.
You know, if we wanted to make peach ice cream, we couldn't do it unless we had a state approved kitchen. If we want to make. A one crust peach pie, we can't do it unless it's in a state of.
That's, that's not the issue, the issue here is, let's say that you know, anytime your activity is on the property, it's all events. I'm still an agricultural business.
That's, that, but that's not, that's not gonna happen.
And with it. Let's say it does happen, let's say if profit values for now, the whole thing dies, and now you go to all, and you're all getting all your income from events. What, what kind of business are you, agriculture or something else? And if, if you're doing events down the road, we get somebody down the road, we said we wanted to do events, we, they have a lot of requirements that follow. So, you know, the question fairness is, if you're doing events, you didn't follow the rules, if somebody else had to follow the rules, it comes down to question fairness. If you're doing events, is, 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 is that your primary, is that becomes your primary business, did you not follow the rules because you, you, you want a different path?
So Ron, are you saying if the farm fails and they're only doing events? Then they would come back?
I think that to me, at some point, and we, we don't know what that point is. You know, we're talking about thirty-five percent, let's say, let's say take fifty percent, majority of the income comes from farming than your agricultural, it could be. The farm stands, farm recognition, thirty-five percent, so there's some threshold that's. In this, in the R S A, that where you no longer have cultural business, and when you make that transition from.
Yeah, no.
How, how do you, how do you come back? Is this approval?
Yeah, I don't, do we have the authority to do that?
I don't think you do.
I know, very similar. If the whole thing fails year after year, you're gonna end up with four million dollar houses on that land, and the whole thing will be gone.
Exactly.
Feels like. Was to support agriculture.
Down for housing. Something just so.
Thank you, that's the alternative.
I know. That happened everywhere, look at the, all the small farms, and there's very few farms, are there any farms in that area?
And please, I'm not there against the farm, it's just, yeah, we have those to follow, it's my mission, we, you will, I agree. This is for our protection in the future, too, and we don't have any.
So are we making plans for now, or are we making plans for ten years down the road, I mean, there are a lot of what ifs that are happening.
I'm not trying to judge doing anything, I'm just trying to say at some point, when your business model changes, there's different rules that apply, and there's different zoning requirements, if, if you're agricultural. You, if you're allowed to do this under the zoning, but you do, you transition to something else, you, you have to go back and get approved for that. At what point do you do that, to work on, clarify mine.
I think you have a legal opinion.
Yeah. I mean, just say one thing, we still agree. That, uh, they don't need engineering plans, this was, uh, on the fourth of, uh, April. During the preliminary review, where everybody seemed to agree that. They, the waivers would be granted for not needing engineer plans, A D U, A D U expansion for the house is fine, state approved kitchen and bathroom will fine. And the porch added to the barn is fine, can we least agree? I have no.
I agree.
Can you just have a question?
Yeah.
Our, our suggestion, I think Vanessa had the best idea. Get a legal opinion, stop this dragging the conversation on and on and on.
Find out more detail.
Yeah, yeah, with the first.
I support just approving the state approved kitchen tonight, because that is directly related to agriculture, it feels like there's no question with that.
Yeah, kitchen and bathroom, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then. That's the point, all the things he's asking for are stuff that you already concurred with.
Right.
The venue and having the venue, that was previously approved in another application, that's not what's in front of you now.
Right.
But I know.
Well, the state approved kitchen is in front of us.
Expansion is the list of stuff he just read off that you guys were all happy, but that's, that's what's.
Well, for the reading book, seven members, I'm not sure, I was five, was without.
And a notice of decision, if that makes the board feel more comfortable, having a label of her need before, which not. I don't know if that would be or not.
Well.
Have to do, they have to come back before you anyway, except with any kind of site finance, not just.
However, it's thesis to be a farm.
Right, it feels like.
Come back before the board.
Right.
Right.
As long as we're farming something.
We can get more legal. We can get more legal.
Not sure you can make that a condition.
No, I mean, not a condition. I mean, we can get like.
But I mean, on this application.
With this.
To say that if it sees, you have an approval, but if it sees to be a farm, your approval goes away. I don't think you have that authority. I think that's where it crosses the line.
Kind of make somebody happy.
No, I'm just saying, you know, if you look at an approval, you're either a. And if something.
The agricultural.
I don't know what that resource. So tonight, what does that trigger for them? Yeah, so the applicant has committed a waiver. If you guys are done. Discuss, I mean, after you're done discussing, um. They had submitted a waiver. Um, to not use the engineer plans. Um, they just made a plan. Um, that shows what they're going to do as a site plan is just not become. Certified by a licensed surveyor. That's what their waiver is. So I think you guys are gonna.
Please.
If you want to continue with.
If you want to continue the debate.
That's up, that's up to you guys.
I don't think that may be kind of subtle things that you turn. I'm with Joyce. I'm, I'm. I see the kitchen being agricultural. I see the bathrooms being agricultural. And I think maybe after this approval, i- if it were to be approved, we might want to contact legal and. Get the definition or guidance as far as what Ron's. Saying when we have this situation. When. When does it become business or making motions with. Or Bob's.
They have, um, in their application. So this is from the preliminary concept. Their application is for the things that they do. Look at the site plan they submitted. It shows everything they don't do.
Right. Do a sweet decision. Yeah, I just wanted you to add those.
Oh, I think. Yeah, you can. You guys can ever add whatever you want.
Just, just a question, actually, I believe for John. John, you mentioned here about, uh, future development would result in mixed use. What do you mean by future development?
No. If. Few, oh, I didn't say future development. What I said, when this application came forward. If you guys determined that it wasn't an expansion of the agricultural use.
Yeah.
The only way they could do it, they would be a mixed-use development. The mixed-use development is because you've got a business and a residence on the same property.
Okay.
And that mixed-use development is not allowing the general residential zone. So they would have to go to the ZBA to have a mixed-use development, then you guys would approve that as a commercial site with the residential stuff that would have nothing to do with agriculture. So that's the reason why they came for the conceptual in front of you before, so they knew what kind of direction they would have to go. This board determined that it's an expansion of the agricultural use. And if you come in with this, they're approving it as an expansion of the agricultural use. So therefore, it's not a mixed-use development. It's part of their agricultural use.
Exactly. And we hear because we told them.
Is that?
Yeah.
I think so.
I just want to know, it seems to you something to proceed. Would I make a motion to add these? Is such a belief?
That would be a discussion for the board if they feel like. They do that.
You probably have to grant the waiver for us because you'd have to do that. And then the other, the, the other items you could list as here's what we're approving on of your.
Requested waiver, the applicant is requiring to have all site plans shows you could, yeah, but it's first in the year. Boundary monuments shall be certified by licensed surveyor for section three point one. Point one, the site plan to new regulations. Language. Included is not granting the waiver would be unless to have your, the absolute grant the waiver not contrary to the spirit. And intent of the regulations. I would have a motion to, if that's, once you make that. Usually like to hand it to you. Okay, that is a motion to grant that waiver.
I, I would second it.
Both please.
Kept the LOI.
Yeah, yeah, my.
Just your own challenge.
So now when we approve of the items that, you know, willing to grant, it's time to get proven it. Just state what those are.
If you want me to add them in.
Yeah.
Or, if you want.
What would we like? Make a motion to add, well, we, no need, uh, for engineering plans, and you expansion to the house with attached deck. David for the kitchen and, uh. Bathrooms. And add the porch to the existing barn. Motion. Do I hear a second, second?
Second.
Call him favor.
Bye. Kept the LOI.
Andy, am I?
Thank you. That you'll be me.
Okay, um. Yeah, I got to read the next decision. I'm good, thanks. Um. That's perfect. I'm so glad this is. Um. The notice of decision for this application, um, is conditionally approved. With review of course to the town of Barrington, the site plan review regulations for non-residential uses and hopefully having well needed, embedded. Version of May seventeen twenty twenty-two and the Barrington zoning ordinance that was amended in March twenty, May three. The application has met all the terms of the regulation of the town of Barrington. All the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant fires the plans being certified by the signings board. Certification of the plans is prior to advancement of any insight work or recording many plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, approval has been certified. These notes. If all the precedent conditions are not met within twelve calendar months of the day. Have to make that correction. She's leaving the A. Seventh, twenty twenty-four. The board's approval, they consider less unless mutually agreement extension has been granted by the board. Um, the condition precedent, we got to follow into the plan notes. At the May second twenty twenty-three planning board meeting, the board approved a waiver for the requirement to have bike plans. That shall be prepared and stand by a professional engineer. Andrew Monche certified by licensed surveyor perception three point one, point one to site regulations. I will also put in.
The condition. Vanessa, we've talked about, is there a condition being fifty-four paving?
Yeah, but would you like to include that?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Do you mind, um?
Take and watch it.
Yeah, and then like, what would you?
Um, as fairly discussed, there was a, uh. Concern brought up by the rotation. The applicant stated that they were willing to give us fifty feet. Um, and make a motion when we make that a condition. Second.
Kept the LOI.
Maybe I'm.
Uh, for confirmation like asphalt, that would be, or like town or groups.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever. Okay.
That's well painted.
When does that have to be completed by?
Within, um, twelve calendar months.
Uh, we have no crop this year. That's going to make this a little bit difficult.
Well, in twelve months, you come back and ask for an extension.
All right, thank you.
The way this notice is written. After a conference staff before they can start their operation. They want to get started doing the stuff they're doing. So those are the conditions that they have to have in place before they can put the additions on.
John, could I put, could we, well, we make them. Put more than that, did he within twenty-four months, something like that? The motion be. The condition be stayed time? Rather than be more.
It would all be like you would have to be, they're saying you can do this by this, but you that have this done in a certain time period afterwards. Because technically.
For them to do anything on the site, they gotta meet those conditions and that would be part of the conditions.
So subsequent, put in the subsequent condition.
Or the subsequent stuff has to be done before they can start operating their business for what they just said that. That you're trying to approve.
Oh, well, that sort of takes away the point of what we just passed.
I'm just the one thinks.
Yeah, no, no, I get it, but.
Time frame that you feel like that would be a more reasonable timeframe? I know that also I spoke.
Twenty-four, early. Twenty-four months of probably.
Okay, earlier today too about the kitchen. You're not sure even then if the state-approved kitchen could be done. Uh, the twelve months. I, I apologize for about that.
Twenty-four months.
It's gonna be a year before the, the. ADU is on and then that building is vacant, then we have to have time. So. Two years.
Well, they get two years. You know, instead of one year.
Well, compared to the projections.
But, um, still, I guess what the issue is, because this approval, if you're saying they don't. To make the approval valid. This stuff has to be done.
Right.
This stuff, in order for this, for me to get my permit to do the stuff they're doing, this has to be valid. So if you're saying it's not valid for twenty-four months, if they don't want to start building, I gotta get my permit. So that's, you, you understand the quandary I'm in.
Have you asked?
Yeah, you could, yeah. Then you guys could vote if this has to be done. Let's say the pavement has to be done within twenty-four months, that you can start the process of doing it. But you would have to have that as part of your approval, because I can't issue any permits unless it has authorized that.
So I'm gonna try my motion to hit them twenty-four months.
So, yeah, you're giving them permission to start all the other stuff and then just the pavement would have to be done in twenty-four months.
Yeah.
I think that's a good question.
Yeah, while the kitchen, while you're gonna approve everything, all the other things are approved to start with now. And you want the condition that the pavement has to be done within twenty-four months, you gotta come back to the planning board? And that way I can still give them the permits to do the other stuff, so.
That would be our intent.
Yeah. Okay.
Whatever.
I'm not sure how to word it in that notice, but I understand what you're looking for.
I was essentially saying those are immediate items and the other.
Or you could do that in phase one, the driveway has to be done to phase two.
Yeah. Or phase one, I guess.
Okay.
What about, um? About final site plan showing where they did the. It wouldn't be intent like a asphalt from an engineer, but to show like.
Yeah. She's suggesting getting some asphalt. Application.
It's talking about building construction.
Yeah, he's gonna be in.
If you look at your site plan, mid-year regulations, what it talks about is. The work on the sites completed and it's not including the buildings and all the other infrastructure. So technically. The conditions are on the stuff on the site, not the buildings.
Yes, I think that's. So it would be a special build. So. On the mark, I'm not calling the motion for the fifty-four, uh, maybe we remember the twenty-four months. That was passed.
Second. Oh, that'll be the LOI.
I think she said it would take her twenty-four.
Then more peach trees were planted.
I'm waiting for the blueberries.
We are too.
Works for you. Whatever works for you will make the motion.
Then we'll see how this is one of our fun to table events.
Yeah.
Have you been to the pancake breakfast?
I can eat them.
I went this year. It's great.
It's a community event. Shame on you guys.
It had competition this year because the police pancake one was at the same time.
Yeah, we talked.
Yeah, and the deliberative session, remember, was the same day, so.
Hurry up and eat, let's go.
It was, they're off the hook. So there was a lot going on.
I forgot where it's not. We think that the site used for the vision is so far, we have a page in our due by the fans ward. Any accident, a huge, huge town. Advocate should submit three full-size papers of. Site plans, one eleven by seven. With the file formants, foreign documents, that require an hour three of the Barrington site under really regulations. Letters saying how the applicant dress, can just approve of the land use office. We're giving them twenty-four months to, um. Complete their permits for a state-approved kitchen. I put off the copy of state of the law kitchen due.
Shouldn't go.
States, but I'm not going to stand. Um, long run, the first fifty feet.
Yeah, it'll be a state inspection in the.
And then they did on subsequent conditions. If there's no substantial active work. Required approval has commenced on the site within two years and the date they're kind of signed, approval shall expire. An extension actually saved one year, maybe granted by a majority vote, the board's long, like five, or at least thirty days prior expiration date. And the board may grant one such extension for need for thirty-five minutes. All of the plans that's been submitted to the board for you to ensure can find the basis. Advocate's substantial work is defined in this section as being expanded by this twenty-five percent of infrastructure. For improvements to part of the group. Thank you, no wish for, that's a blessing.
Thank you.
Got a vote on that.
Now you get a vote.
So it's a voice to do, uh.
Go to that again.
Yes. Second, subject.
Okay.
You seconded.
And who, who is?
Okay.
Roll call, okay. Kept the LOI. All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
As a board, do we have questions that need to go to legal for the future?
Do you want to talk to you? I didn't think you saw it.
Yeah.
And I don't think we saw it.
I think we should get some.
My jet, we should have asked that. Um, is some of that really weather, maybe they, they, uh, flood out a little bit and then cross off. Yeah, what do you? Yeah, we drove over there today. I mean, they have a. Big enough for these units and then like. I had to drive over there because I wasn't sure if it was the thing or not. It's a different, you go further down. Winkley Road and then you come to Hayes Road, which is this dirt road, which says do not enter, you know, private, um. And, and this, this, uh, barn and mobile. It's big enough. It's just clearing too.
Uh, two forty down fifty-four, that seven dash two units, ten and eleven, solar. In the lone. Pressed by the applicant. For my website, you know, it's one of eleven, two hundred and ten square feet retail basically, then three thousand square room warehouse. Building twelve car and spaces located at one oh twenty nine five, an isosceles circle in a regional commercial zoning district. Can you, Justin?
I'm just, yes, yes. The building is existing, uh, at the two hundred square foot.
I checked your website. You don't even post often, of course. You don't have any addresses there, so nobody's.
Nobody's from buyer, yeah.
The conditions from the vendors that require you to do retail, want you to advertise.
They, they would, yeah, so they would have to put you out of your stock. And so that's why I made it a little bit more.
So you can't just.
No, I can't. I think.
Anyhow. Now we are scared.
That because the liquid uses when that was approved, this will not want to.
But it's zoned for what he wants to do.
So only way, but the original approval that no one was.
Yeah.
Was this was not wanted to be approved.
Yeah, the difference is. For us.
Right.
The other ones come.
You named the guy with the, uh. Yeah.
This is not, this is not.
Does the board have any questions at the end?
The only question I have is, for the plan is common, is do we have, is there an ADA, property spot? Built?
What is?
Like a handicap.
I, I don't have one. I, I don't have one currently, there's, it's, they're right in front of the building.
It could be yours, right?
Yep.
It could just, it's really just signage, right? It can be.
Sign, they're supposed to, supposedly. Yeah, okay, so I can still, yeah.
Uh, please said no comments, fire, no comments, road agent, no comments, uh, building department, you tell the application that somewhere. Assessing was all set, confirmation, no comments. The condition for the United Site Plan improvement for determining the conditions, personally. Our condition question. There was an opening public comment, anybody?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Kev, the O I.
In the AMI. Public comment, please, on this. Okay, there are no public comments.
I would like to speak for against this application. Chairman, I do not. If you would come up to the podium and give your name and address and comment for it, please.
I, I didn't know what his business is and where he's located, that's all.
Oh, okay.
That's White Mountain Knives, they're so collectible, collectible pocket knives. And it's all on knives.
And where are you?
I'm on, uh, Ice and Glass Circle. One twenty-five, just past Renaissance.
When you get your watches.
So just past Renaissance Firearms, there's like a whole bunch of.
Oh, yes.
Garages, yes.
Oh, good for you, I'm glad there's a business, that's it.
Yeah, this seems like a good. A good way to support a business.
Public comment. Uh, requested waivers from the applicant, if I have site plans, show we are standing by professional engineers. Boundaries monument should be certified by license surveyor, for sets of two, all ones from the ones, the site's annual regulations. Not granting the waiver will pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant for only way to enough to found through its spirit and incentive regulations. So, do you need a motion?
I would move, as you just read, the requested waivers from the applicant, is that sufficient?
Second. Oh, is it?
Kev, the O I.
This corner right here. AMI.
Before I start, um, I'll put it approved. Um, there is no other, other than as the ADA fine, I'll add that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm like part of it. Um, approved the application. For the operation of two hundred and thirty feet retail space, and three thousand square foot. Warehouse built from a twelve parking space with the labor. Regaining parts of the town of Barrington, site plan review regulations for non-residential uses in multi-family dwelling units, as amended May seventeen, twenty twenty-two. The Barrington zone ended March twenty twenty-three. Advocate then all the boundaries and regulations of the town of Barrington. And I guess you actually will be a conditions question, that we saw this time. The precedent condition must be met by applicant at the expense of the applicant. Once the precedent conditions are met, the final bill is considered final. Needs to be met within twelve calendar months to the day of May second, twenty twenty-four. Or to go gets their lapse, unless mutually agreeable, especially granted to the board, and that condition was to add the ADA fine. I don't think of like what, I guess just one.
I mean, I could.
Even when this all got started, is he made an application to have a sign on the building? So when you make the application for the sign to building, when I. Look at the sign on the building, after I give you the permit for that, I can look at the ADA sign. So the ADA sign doesn't require a permit, but you're assigned to your nice stuff.
Okay, so I'll put sign up and then.
Yeah, then I, when I look at it, I can look at both of them and then. So I can just note that it was in place.
Any other change in site, the use of the operation of the business required to be application for the funding board? And at the May, second, twenty twenty-three, funding board meeting, the board with the waiver for departments have all site been prepared and stamped for. By a professional engineer. Boundary monuments shall be certified by licenser for section three point one, point one of a site. Excuse me, by primary regulation, they can use it after law. Vote on the notice of addition.
Kev, the O I.
AMI.
Best of your business.
I need to make a motion.
Uh, I trussed it.
Yeah, sure, I did.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the waiver. That was the waiver, uh, being also.
This might be a first for me.
All right, the next item is. Design review for. Two five four seven fourteen dash V R. Slash S T A O. That point three dash design owners hand bone LLC, rubbish falling, zinging. Pressed by the applicant for a major site. When we designer view proposing to construct seven multi-family unit. And use an article for section two point one, which is only means in general residential zone. Now, two five three lot fourteen, located at forty-nine Winkley Pond Road, on the thirteen point four seven year site. In general residential, it's only district. This Christopher Berry is the project owner.
I just have a question, Tristan, do you want me to put up any of the plans on?
Uh. Yeah, feel free.
That way people in the audience may be able to.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Christopher Berry, with Berry Surveying and Engineering, uh, representing the applicants here this evening. Uh, with me tonight is one of the principal members, Robert Baldwin, if there are any questions that I can't answer. Uh, which hopefully there are not. Um, he'd be happy to jump in, otherwise he's supposed to be quiet and not open his mouth. Most know the rules of my engagement. Um, so, uh, one of, uh, Robert's companies has purchased, uh, the property known as Forty-Nine Winkley. Uh, Farm Road, and, uh, that site is approximately thirteen and a half acres. Uh, it contains wetlands, uh, towards the center of it. And it contains three upward islands, uh, around its perimeter. Uh, there's an existing single-family home on site, there's an existing well, there's an existing septic. There's a large, larger, uh, barn, uh, that sits at the front of the site, next to the existing, uh, single-family home. Most of the site towards the front of Winkley Farm is, uh, lawn or open field. The wetlands on site come up into that field, um, and the site contains a prime wetland. Uh, that prime well was delineated on site by a soil scientist, uh, who delineated where the very fraudulent soils are. Uh, towards the center. And a wetland scientist delineated the edge of the, uh, jurisdictional wetlands on site, as typical. Uh, we've done a, a full boundary survey of the project site, we've done a full topographic survey of the site, and existing conditions, uh, survey of the site. Uh, this is located, uh, just off from, uh, one twenty-five, and is located within the general residential zone. I double-checked this time. As part of section, uh, four point two. Um, the zoning allows for multifamily, uh, developments to take place under certain set of circumstances. Um, what we're proposing to do is, uh, redevelop the site. Um, using a varying different, um, styles of housing. Um, we're proposing five, four, I'm sorry, five. Sorry, a total of six, uh, two bedroom units, two, three, uh, plus bedroom units. Uh, they'd be grouped, uh, so that four of them are adjacent to the northern, northerly boundary line. Uh, two of them would be constructed as part of a duplex, uh, that would face, uh, Winkley. Pond Road, and then the existing barn, uh, would be converted to a one-bedroom, uh, unit as well. Uh, the applicant, as part of the full engineering process, would do. An analysis of the barn to ensure that, uh, structurally it could be converted, uh, and that it could be converted using, uh. The current residential codes, uh, that would require. Would be required for the conversion. As part of the project, the existing single-family home would be removed, uh, we installed one of the proposed duplexes. And we pushed that further back from the street, uh, so it was more conforming than the existing location of a single-family home. Um, the soils on site, uh, are sandy in that they have high transversivity, uh, but they have high seasonal high water tables, so. Uh, I'm sure what many of the people behind me are going to tell you is that much of the site is wet, it is. Um, and, uh, during certain times of year, uh, there are high water, groundwater tables, uh, on site. Uh, we're specifically avoiding, uh, wetlands, we're avoiding wetland buffers, we're avoiding the wetland, uh, prime wetland buffer. Uh, we're looking to develop, uh, the portions of the site reasonably responsibly outside of those constraints. Uh, we've done test pitting on site to know where the seasonal high water table is, these were conducted by Jack Hayes, the soil scientist. Um, and so we know onsite where the good soils are for affluent disposal areas. Uh, where the soils are that can support stormwater systems. Uh, we'll need to deto- design and detain stormwater. Uh, treat stormwater prior to entering into the wetland buffer and the jurisdictional wetland areas. Um, and all that would be done as part of the project design that we bring forward, uh, moving, moving forward. Uh, a couple of changes to the designer review plan that I'd, uh, like to discuss with you tonight. Uh, the chief, uh, and the road agent have sort of weighed in on where this project is. Um, and, uh, some life safety aspects of the design. Uh, after going to the site this afternoon, uh, I've been there a number of times, but after going this afternoon, looking at the site in light of their comments. Uh, what we're likely going to do is change the location of where we're entering the property to the existing. Approximately where the existing location of the driveway is now, uh, which is at the crest of the hill. Right now, we're proposing the driveway be just, uh, north of that, uh, and is slightly down slope crest of the hill. And though I think we would meet our site distance, uh, quite readily, uh, in the proposed location that we have on the plan. I think it is a safer location to place it, uh, in the location where the existing driveway is. And so instead of the loop coming around and ending where we show it on our plan, we would sort of reverse that loop. And end it, uh, facing the, uh, the townhouse cell structures. Uh, in so doing, I think we could pull the proposed driveway and loop a little closer to the roadway. And that would leave, uh, a little additional room for some storm, additional stormwater features, uh, and leave additional room, uh, between us, the buffer, and. Uh, the jurisdictional wells. Um, the chief and the road agent have noted, uh, some deficiencies that they feel, uh, will. Uh, the road have, uh, in general. That's a fairly newly paved roadway. Uh, it's twenty feet in width, and it's pretty consistent throughout the whole. The whole road, uh, they talk about potentially changing, uh, the intersection designs at one twenty-five. I think they'll, they make note of those based on sort of a larger planning ideal. Uh, certainly seven units, uh, in this particular area of town is not. Uh, not going to change the intersections of Winkley Pond Road at one twenty-five in either direction. If the town wishes to, uh, change the direction or limit the direction of Winkley Pond. Uh, we, we'd support it, uh, if there are minor modifications that are needed, uh, in so doing, uh, we'd be happy to participate. But I think, um, what the board needs to remember and, and the staff needs to remember is that. There needs to be a rational nexus between, uh, a project design scope and size and what, uh, offset improvements, uh, are requested, uh, of an application. Um, so I think with moving the driveway to the crest of the hill, I think a lot of site distance issues that are mentioned in the staff memo. Um, are addressed, uh, in that way. And then if there are implications that the applicant can participate in, uh, along the roadway, we'd be happy to discuss those with, uh, the road agent, the fire chief moving forward. Uh, the chief has asked for a twenty thousand gallon cistern, which the applicant is eligible to. Um, and will find a good spot, uh, on site. Our first choice is to find a spot along Winkley Pond's road so that it could be used, uh, by the general public. And that the chief doesn't have to come into the project site to, uh, get water if it needs to be used somewhere else, uh, in the area, so we would. Our first, uh, first choice would be to put that somewhere on, uh, Winkley Pond Road along our frontage. Uh, we will need a, uh, a common septic system. Uh, which we have, uh, done the loading calculations to design. Um, this will be a common well, will not, uh, trigger a public water supply system. So, uh, with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions the board has, uh, on the application. Take comment from the board and the public, and then we'll go to, uh, the design process moving forward.
There's that, I want just one question. The, uh, two unit, units five and six that are going with the low home, is there a reason you're not setting that further back so they can do the setbacks?
Um, it's a conversation that we wanted to have further with John, uh, about. Being in full conformance or being more nearly conforming. Um, we would, uh, we would try and find that balance. Uh, if the code required that we move it all the way back, we would, uh, the structure that we have picked out for that. The streetscape view of that fits much better, uh, more adjacent to the roadway system. Um, it's not a typical townhouse structure, it's more of a, uh, colonial str- style feature. Um, and Rob is trying to make that sort of the focal point of the development. Um, but if the code requires that we be fully conforming, um, then we would be to forty-foot setback.
I, I, I know that the fire, fire chief, um, already discussed. After too much on the pilot, I mean, with not too much concern, you, you mentioned that reasonable nexus. Maybe limits the authority that we have. I guess. I read under. Site management review regulations, uh, four point eight point one. It's a reset. I think it says. Adjacent, this experience from access gained, maybe substantial upgrading, so it can be relied for. When traffic will from a both side lability, impact adjacent streets or sections. You know. I think that gives us a. Purview, look at this and say, dangerous, you know, locally including access on one twenty-five. Giving final decision process.
I, I'm not trying to say that you don't have the decision-making authority to do that. What I'm saying is, when we talk about big developments, big changes are needed. We're talking about medium developments, medium changes are needed, and so on. And so, uh, when we're talking about squaring off an entire intersection for seven units. Uh, or changing the geometry of a roadway at a major route, uh, that has larger land planning, um, considerations. Um, we may be one card in the deck that aids in that process. But I think the one thing that I gleaned from the comments is that there are existing problems at both intersections now. Um, there are other developments to come that will also exacerbate that. Um, and so we're one piece of that puzzle. And my rational nexus comment is only to say, we are not, we're, uh. By law, uh, we're not necessarily burdened with all of that infrastructure, uh, for our small project. But we're certainly willing to review it, analyze it, and, uh, discuss.
I had a question on the four units. They're gonna be similar to the ones, I assume, the three bedroom, like, we said, hundred and fifty square feet.
A little bit small.
They're gonna be more aesthetically pleasing, since you're gonna do something different for the smaller unit?
Yeah, um, we have renderings that, um, pretty, to give a pretty good idea as to, as to what it looks like.
And there'd be some more landscaping, apparently, that is lacking. Also.
Jip on something, yeah.
Alright, I did drive by today. Uh, the barn is in touch shit. Side is convenient, it's roof problems. You'd have to raise it up, you'd have to put a. Uh, foundation and so forth. Is it really salvageable? I mean, it just looks.
Well, it's why I pointed out that we would do the analysis of that. Um, we did something very similar in Dover. On Bellamy Road, uh there was a barn that. Uh, in my original opinion, should have caught a match uh on a bottle of gas. Um, and Rob has converted that into four beautiful units, uh that is structurally sound and meets the character of the land. So. Um, it's an analysis that we just need to move forward with.
If you have to go through all the trouble and. Secure it so it won't fall apart and you can raise that with the foundation and. So any possibility of moving it out of the. Right away and then other. Step back.
Potentially.
If you have that big spot. Show me on the existing roadway, which nature. That might be a good thing, if you can do it. For a couple. Uh, yeah, comments, um. Among them, getting back to the um audit report appeared by the DOT at the intersection, which is. Primarily, it's a beauty hill road, probably next to most of the traffic is one of the pond.
It's really the angle of approach that's the biggest problem.
Now the Nova, of course, is more than three units need of loading, um which I guess you already provided, right?
Uh, we haven't gone through the formal.
That's a form.
Yeah.
We're suggesting something.
I, I think, look, comments, sure, to me. First thing I worry about, I, I, I live up to a hill, so I'll get use that all the time. To me, it's not only the angle that Winkley Pond comes in, but because of so much traffic going to Beauty Hill. People routinely use the breakdown line to go around it. So to me, coming out, sticking your nose out to see traffic coming, you know, it's not so much the angle, it's. You stick your nose out to see what's going on. You know, that breakdown line is frequently used to go around traffic. Like, I think it's, to me, that's an issue as well. I think it's probably the fire chief, you know, probably have to recommend it one way. I know the other way's gonna split, so it's probably a little bit better, but. And I see problems both ways going, even if it's one way, if you're coming from the north, you're turning there. If the car in front of you swerves to go onto Beauty Hill on the breakdown lane and all of a sudden you're parked there, you can turn on that road. Um, you know, it's a concern. That's the biggest traffic intersection accident we have in downtown.
Uh, so some question was asked, um. Rescind rentals or.
Unclear at the moment.
Board have any more questions or comments before I open them to the public? Alright. Anybody who'd like to comment, please come up to the podium if you need to discuss, please.
I said tons of. So Brian Whedon, uh sixty crew, Winston Pond Road, so. I did the barn, uh lived there my whole life. It was my father's place. He went through the barn with a tractor, went to the floor. It was all. Uh, wet before that. We had pigs underneath the barn and a tractor. We kept on the barn. And we filled it all with sand. So their test pits that they found sand on was stuff we trucked in from a sand pit, including uh he. You know, behind the mobile home, the leach field, all that shit was uh, we hauled in. Oh, sand from the sand pit, they're right down, that I don't know. So uh, all that. Where your test pits were, 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 what we hauled in, the sand. So the hydric soils um go like. The hydric, the definition of hydric soils are saturated, uh contain water. You know, very oxygen vegetation. So I seen that place flood. Right up to his uh windmill or his well right now and of about the. Uh, Chris's garden was underwater um in his last storm. So I took some photos. And uh I submitted them to the board. Yeah. So one, the photo of the uh residence was one week prior, we, we, when we got all this rain. So you can see the contaminated area. You know, of the farm was, was like kind of in dry spell. They dug the test pits during the drought of last summer. So everything was dry that year. And you know, the Brooklyn was flowing, but this year it's really full. You know, so the hydric soils come up a long ways, you know. I'd be surprised they meet the setbacks of the fifty foot. From the wetlands and you know, the prime wetlands right after the clearing. Of the farm is the prime wetlands that all flows up from the Bellamy. So the Brooklyn is self-contained. What is my property and it disperses as a wide flow. So I, I, you know, I'm all for progress and you know, very. Surveying has done their homework as far as they cross the Ts and dotted their i's, but you know. When they bought the property, they never, like, nobody ever asked me or anything. What we did, you know. Prior to this, before, you know, my father subdivided it to my brother. And so my brother, you know, I ended up buying thing when I was in the military overseas. So I bought the land back then. So I moved back here to Barrington and you know, put double it in. But you know, the, no way can that support, you know, the seventeenth family home they want to put out on that property. You know, pardon my, my speaking ability, because I had a stroke a couple of years ago. So my mind's still sharp, but I, I don't articulate that well. But I calculated the area they're developing is less than three acres. So it's like. Ninety-nine thousand eight hundred square feet of that field. And the calculation, my calculation triangulation is less than three acres that you're trying to develop. On the property line. So you know, they may have thirteen acres, but only three acres is dry. You know, maybe three point two is dry. And the rest is wetland. So you know, I, I assume, you know, the, you can't isolate the wetlands from the dry lands, but you know. Like, everybody walks on that road, Winkley Pond Road, and like, I know eight people that walk on the road. You know, including Debbie, myself, you know, getting over stroke, I used Winkley Pond Road to get better. My brother got killed on Winkley Pond Road. So you can't say that, you know, it's not a high traffic area. So they're, they're proposing to more than double what we have already on Winkley Pond. Right now, we have, like, everybody has single family home on Winkley Pond Road. We all own our own home. And now, you know, they're introducing the apartments or whatever, you know, seven families. It's like, we only have eight now. On Winkley Pond, and that counts to, to residents that are living in my father's old existing property. That's. So all I have is like, you know, the, you ought to do a road study, you know, because they can't contain what they have now. You know, then nobody does twenty-five down that area. And then, you know, some people walk right in the middle of the road, you know, you have to be careful. And you know, every time there's an accident on Beauty Hill, they use Winkley Pond Road to jet off that, you know, at high rate of speeds. So you know, they, they did. They followed the rules as far as the, the development goes, but I'm a little unsure of the wetland that they identified. And then uh, a trap study, you know, is definitely, you know, right now. I, I don't see any problem with Winkley Pond Road as far as, where we merge in on traffic and all that, you know, but we know all accidents happen on Beauty Hill. And we know everybody that lives on the road. You know, including Hazel. You know, like Bobby and Carol and Lisa and Barbara and, you know, people I grew up with. I guess that's all I got. I got more pictures if you need them.
Thank you.
Conso here, um eighty-seven Winkley Pond Road. When I bought the property there, I bought it off the guy's, last name was Dunson. One of the first stories that Steve told me. When I was on that road was of his brother getting killed. Really glad that they're planning the project to move the road because. With the way that crest, the steepness of the crest, if that road, the proposing doesn't come. Right where you can see both ways. It, it's a sure killer. So I really am glad they have proposed to move the road there. That's really important to me. The other thing is the barn. That barn, turning that into a structure and being right on the road without following setbacks is an awful idea. That's no different than if there was a dog outside in the front yard and they wanted to turn that into a house. It was never inhabitable. It was strictly for cows, tractors, hay. So I'm very opposed to that. I also agree with him that. It could be, it could be a bit of a line miss on the poorly drained versus the very poorly drained. I know that Steve used to take and get his tractor stuck if you drove out there and. It's, it's times of the year, it's very, very wet. When they did the survey in June, we were in the drought. I know the soil scientist is supposed to follow plants and other stuff. My brother was one. But even still, he was saying you can get fooled some in a drought. Be- because you don't really see the true condition. So I do have a question about whether that line is true. Otherwise, I, I'd agree. I think they've done their homework and. Everything else pretty, is pretty much as you can get right.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Botwell. I'm at forty Hayes Road, um, the dirt road that, but, um, now. I just want to talk about the traffic of coming out or coming in and off of one twenty-five. As it is when we leave one twenty-five, I mean, we, Winkley Pond Road and going north or with Rochester. Basically, we have to pull up onto the um breakdown lane. Because who's ever coming off of Beauty Hill Road does not look when we're coming out. So for our own safety, we have to pull out that way. But when we're pulling onto it, because everybody's going fifty miles an hour. You have to be looking right of you, behind you and beside you and see how fast you can get across the road quickly. Before somebody hits you, because we have seen accidents and people getting hit right there. So yeah, definitely need a traffic study done. On something on that part of there, because it is really dangerous. Like that, so. Yeah.
But when I left Winkley today.
Yep.
Pulled out, there was no traffic as far as I can see.
What, what does it is, what's it, well, you get that, yeah. Yep, yeah, I, I walk and I, I cross, go, go down. Yeah, and it's like, yeah, you, 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 you take your life into here when you're, you're crossing that, but yeah. Definitely need a more study done on that, because either we need a light or a, a center lane or something, because the traffic is just unbelievable.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Deborah Leahy and I live on forty-eight. Winkley Pond Road, which is right across from the barn. Um, I guess I'll continue with the, the road. Issue, um, we that live, we that live on the road, um. We know what vehicles belong on the road, it's well like a neighborhood watch. Um, so any vehicle that. Shouldn't be on the road. We know who they are and if they're parked somewhere where they dump garbage or whatever, we, we know who they are. Um, we also know that, um. The entrances to Winkley Pond, whether they're across from uh Beauty Hill Road. Um, or the other end where the storage is. Uh, it is very wise when I leave my driveway. I have, I back onto my lawn and drive out because our driveway is on a hill. It goes down. And the road has blind spots where like at the crest and the road goes down. When you're walking, you can't see on this side. The car couldn't, car won't be able to see you and from this side also. But um, when I'm going out my driveway, if I'm going to Market Basket, down at the end of the road, there is a fork. Where. You can be stupid and take the one on the left, because then you have to really cock your head to see the traffic. You're smart to take the right one, because it makes you stop. Look both ways without craning your neck and breaking your neck so that you can get out safely. Um, the other end. I basically use only to go if I'm going to Dover Rochester. That's, uh, and I do cross over from. Beauty Hill Road, but usually it's when. There's nothing coming. Any, either way, or I just go on to one twenty-five and then take the second exit. Um. Our road is very windy. It depends on how many times you have traveled our road in your investigation of the property that you purchased and that you want to develop. Um, when you're coming from the pond end. You come on, you're in front of the farmhouse and then it curves. You can't see basically what's coming and then it curves again and then it crests by our driveway, goes downhill and then it curves again. Um. I do walk in the middle of the road and you know why I walk in the middle of the road is because it's a twenty-five mile an hour road and. That's what we want. We don't want fast traffic and people that think. Our road goes somewhere like to the pond or to heaven, God forbid, and. They go on faster than they should. And so I'm the road, you know, it's like, slow down, slow down. You know, you can hit me. I know you're bigger than I am, but. This is a twenty mile, twenty-five mile an hour uh zone. And at one time we had. Um, Steve, uh, you know, he was in the scooter and stuff and you, you know, you do have some handicap people on our road, so you have to be careful. Um, an increase of seven units. Theoretically is an increase of fourteen vehicles minimum. On our road, which. It used to be a dirt road, used to be great. People didn't use it as a speedway, you know, to get. On one twenty-five. Um, safety is a very important issue on our road. Um. That's all I have to say about the road. Um. So if I am walking in the middle of the road and I think you're doing more than twenty-five miles an hour. You know, if, if my eyes don't kill. You know, I, I, uh, I, I've been told when I used to work, it's like. Oh man, don't cross her, because her eyes will kill you before I'm done with. Yeah, so, um, and, um. I don't know. I always thought that conservation land and wetlands were a non-issue. You cannot build on conservation land, I suppose, unless you take it out of conservation, pay all the. Back taxes that are owed from when it was put into conservation until you want to expand it. And wetlands is for, we have deer in the neighborhood. We do have bobcats, raccoons. We did have a moose at one point. Um, we had, the, the deer are just beautiful and the birds, we have all kinds of birds. Um. I would think they use wetlands. I mean, do they or don't they? You know? But there's, that land is all wet. That I, that land is all wet. I live on the hill. My house, you know what my house is. It's a beige ranch across from the barn. It sits on a hill. I have my boots on because my, uh, some pump didn't. Uh, take care of the water that we've been getting. I have uh the ranch, I've got the gutters. The gutters come down. We have extensions of the gutters, so it, uh, the water goes away. The gutters come down. We have extensions to the gutters, so it, uh, the water goes away from the foundation, away from the house. We've had so much rain lately, which hasn't happened. You know, it's not every year, but um. We had this much water in our basement. Our basement is fourteen by twenty-four. That's, we have a small basement. The rest of the house is on a slab. But here we were going down cellar and dealing with this much water. The sump pump couldn't handle it. And we got the shop back. You people. I will call you you people because you are people.
Yeah.
And uh. If I'm up here and I have water in my cellar on a hill. God forbid, the buildings that you build that are. Theoretically maybe twenty feet lower. And it's, we have a high water table, very high water table. Um. Your places are gonna be flooded. Oh, sorry. Oh, um, so you know, if my basement floods on a hill.
Yeah.
If I was a house insurer, I wouldn't insure them. You, you're gonna be flooded every year, whether you're, you know, you try to help yourself or not, but anyways. There's gonna be too many cars on our road. Our road supports what it has. Um. The rules of our road were not enforced when the. Winkley Pond Storage Building went in. Those people, when they come out of the storage, were supposed to. Go left. It's never been.
More people like to speak.
Pardon me?
I think we have more people.
I hope to God, so.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Is, yes, sir.
Brian Botwell, forty Hayes Road. Uh, I think we've covered the uh. Beauty Hills intersection. It's a pretty nally intersection. Yeah, um, my concern is just the wetland delineation. Um, you saw the pictures. Um, I, I just think that should be looked at again as far as uh, you know, wetlands acroachment. Uh, that's who does run the full time uh, between Brian's property and their property. And the problem is uh, that's a flowing stream and where it goes down back behind my property is. It's no longer a stream. It just kind of disperses into wetlands area. So again, a lot of heavy rain, um, there's no flow and the wetlands cannot take and absorb that amount of water, which causes a backup in that area. So I, I just feel that the wetland delineation should be looked at with more time. So, thank you.
Right. Thanks. Um. You have any comments based on?
Uh, just a couple.
Reactions?
Nope, no reactions. Um, so I think we know we need to do a traffic study, so we're happy to do that. Uh, we need to do some consulting with DOT. Um, I know they've got some long-term plans for the intersection of Beauty Hill, Winkley and uh, one twenty-five, so we coordinate with them. Uh, I'm happy to have uh, one of the other wetland scientists we use take a, another look at the site.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea, just.
Um, I think we need to all recognize though, there's a difference between hydroic soils uh, and jurisdictional wetlands. Formerly, there were hydroic soil boundaries that were used for determining where wetlands were. Um, the Army Corps of Engineers and the state of New Hampshire now recognizes that there are jurisdictional wetland boundaries that are outside of what are hydroic soils. Uh, we have a jurisdictional wetlands boundary. For the project site as per the regulations. Require of us. Um, so we can certainly take a look and see if there are hydroic soils above the jurisdictional wetlands boundary. Doesn't change the buffers or setbacks at all, but uh, it might be good information to have moving forward. Uh, in terms of uh, construction groundwater tables, uh, these are slab on grade type uh, construction. Uh, the issues that she's describing in her home are groundwater coming uh, up through her basement. Um, and is directly in related, um, though related to the amount of rain we're getting. It's unrelated to the amount of overland flow that um, we're seeing as part of the weather pattern that we're currently in. Um, so uh, we would ensure that we're above seasonal groundwater tables uh, with. The floors of our structures, uh, we don't have basements. Uh, so we're not gonna have the, the issues that they're having in their basements. Um, but we're also doing a, a stormwater analysis to ensure that we're not changing the stormwater patterns on our site and affecting people downstream.
Just curious about any runoff on your side from haze, the little slope that's there.
Yep, so um, we've started the stormwater analysis on this project. Uh, the amount of area that contributes to our site uh, does continue over haze and up that slope a, a good bit. Uh, we've walked that area and we've flown it with a drone to know which area drains to the pond and then which area drains to us. Um, they're correcting that, uh, there's a stream. It's actually the boundary line when. The gentleman's father, uh, so divided the property, uh, drew. Drew the surveyor, Fred Drew, drew the boundary line down the center of the stream. Uh, and then it then flows out into the uh, large prime wetland area. So there is a large amount of open water that is out there. We've delineated that on the plan. Um, and as part of the calculations uh, for the project site.
Well, you're on the act for overlay area too, so.
Yes.
So more than every. Be.
We're. Yeah.
Staff is recommending a traffic analysis too.
Yeah, understood.
Be enabled.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, uh, just a quick question for Chris. I was looking at the fire chief's recommendation. The recommendations. And he's being proactive, but I know it's not your concern of what comes after you on that road. Are you giving? Some credence to what he has said?
Yes, so part of what we do when we're doing traffic assessment. Is assessment of the impact of what you're proposing on the infrastructure. Uh, accident review in the area, but also what plans are known to be moving forward. And so clearly the chief knows that, and I know that the parcel across the street.
Uh huh.
Is under consideration for development.
Yeah.
And so I would reach out to that landowner or that consultant and ask, you know, what sort of. Development they're proposing and then we would opine on what impacts that might have in conjunction with our project.
Alright, thanks.
The planning. Staff can give you some drawings of what they will propose. Can also anybody? What's the question about the calculations of area two and three, the upland soil?
I don't know.
If the notation.
Yeah, I don't know if that was a question.
Yeah. There's still a little.
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Don't bring anybody again.
There's nobody online for this.
So, where he has this, does think, well, if you dig down the foot, you hit water. So windmill is right there, so they, well, they can't go any further back of setbacks because of the wetlands. So he's got a point here down like eight feet from the blast pipe. The way his windmill is, he's getting, getting water there for like fifty-five years. So that's all, you know. At that, you know, me and my brother drove a, a, the pipe down and, you know, point and we replaced the point and. He'd be getting water there ever since, but if you dig down the foot, you hit water. Right where that is, so they, they can't like push that back too much farther. Because it's gonna get in the wetlands, you know, setbacks like fifty feet from the brook, whatever, the wetlands there, you know. I'm like, it still bothers me, like the prime wetlands is right beyond that clearing. And the, like, the brook is not like prime wetlands. I don't understand that much. Like, and then they add the, the barn is like falling down, all the pegs are broken and, you know, all the beams have been, beam and peg. So me and my brother shorted up, you know, to get it just this far, you know, and they sold it and so me and my brother relieved they. From the sold the barn, like, wow, we not deal with that anymore, but you can see it's moving away. The sill.
I was surprised to see a dishy antenna.
So he stuck that up because he didn't have any other place to put it.
That goes with the trailer?
Yeah, that, that, that's for the receptionist trailer, but you know, we used to have to go up and clean the snow up. But the sill on the machine shed is like three feet off what it used to be. We jacked it up, pushed it back in and bolted down and we poured the foundation and all that stuff, but you know, it's walking out again. And you know, it, like, before it was a granite foundation, but it's now sand and we just poured the concrete in the middle to keep the barn standing. And that's all we did, you know, it, it's not what it was designed to do, you know, it's like nothing. I'm surprised it's last this long. I really am. We have, you sure want your planks in the barn if you keep it standing or whatever? And you know, thank God it never came down, but I wouldn't put any value in there.
Thank you.
As all have.
Any more comments? Those public comments?
Yep.
Since it's designed with no voting, changing, um.
Right. Anybody have any more consignments or opposing? They disclose in public hearing when it's designed new. Oh, I need information for that. Tell me your second.
Debbie, oh.
Andy, am I?
Just here. I'm right now. I think.
Period. Like even for divine, but either for my location, you know, you have to try again. Um, like, that's like the next. Unfortunately, we don't know when maybe, maybe, so we'll see ready to tomorrow or it could be. Yeah. But she'll be. No, okay. Thank you. You're more welcome to stay too.
No, the one was sitting right here.
It was here, no. And work first. So. Good.
I know, so it's gonna place them.
Right. That's up there. I'm gonna say, see you. Be nervous.
Okay.
There he is. Okay, uh, a good business, a commission, uh, commission request, uh, for wetland buffer. Towards uh, revision. Forward to go to room four.
And I think you have to unmute your. Yeah, I'm not sure how to do this. No, you're not.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Get it easy.
Do that one, be unmuted.
Hey, I know you.
There's a, uh. Just maybe two, forty feet from my. Bottom of your cheek problems. There's a tiny island. We don't know. It's probably. Probably the size of this circle.
Can't beat you off you, I don't gonna.
I put the White House on it.
Either call or rejoin the meeting.
Things looks like.
We'll wait for it.
It's almost underwater. It's up to life.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my.
We can hear you, Ken.
Okay, um. Uh, we've now spoken about this uh, several times and uh. I'm very pleased that the last time we met, uh, we seemed to have a reasonably positive reaction to. Going forward with a plan for the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board to collaborate. On a, an amendment or a change to section nine point six of the ordinances. Um, to create a more efficient system for looking at what happens when an applicant. Wants to broach the wetland buffers. Um. Uh. You, you can see from the past case that I just listened into that uh. Uh. That it's a touchy issue and uh, at times and it would be good. In all cases to look more closely at the wetland itself and see what its functions and values are. And to try to do that in a way that doesn't break anybody's bank. Uh, especially in small to medium uh, sized projects, uh, but to uh. Set up something that would be accessible, easily understandable, efficient, uh, all those things. And so uh, at your request, uh, with the help of staff, uh, we created a uh. A scope of work which you have in front of you. Um, I can. I, I would actually like, I don't want to read the whole thing unless you really want me to, but um. Really just one sentence is really the crux of it. The overall purpose. Is to develop a rapid assessment technique for ascertaining the functions and values of a particular wetland. So when faced with a request to waive all or part of the wetland buffer to a particular wetland. The planning board has reproducible information upon which to make informed decisions. And um, I, I don't think it's useful to talk about details of what that might look like. Uh, what we propose to do is to hire a consultant to spend some time. Um, looking at this issue and try to give us something to uh, kick around, see if we like. Uh, make modifications to uh, with the hope of bringing something before the voters next March.
Have a question? Why is that? I have concerns about. Going. increasing the buffer. Ever in. This may be, limits the scope to an application to reduce the wetlands. So I have no concerns about, you know. To be honest, the reason we have now, this view of this new, this new stuff of work. Um, does not have that, does not have.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I apologize, but I couldn't hear much of what you said, Ron.
Yeah, I'm right with the microphone, Ken. I was just saying, Ken, that um, you know, I have concerns about going over the fifteen hundred feet before. This new proposal specifically limits it to, we're supposed to go under the buffer fifteen hundred feet, so I think that's a, that's a change that makes me feel bad.
From the look on his face, I think not.
What?
Let me remember to. See you. I, I like this better than what I saw before yet.
Okay, good. That, that was our intent. To get you feeling better. I'm, 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 I'm serious. The, the point of this is to do something collaborative so in the end, we all feel good about it and. Whatever we come up with, we feel good about putting in front of the voters.
John. The highlight, the highlight word. That was the last one we last time, and that's been changed. So basically, we're looking for waivers. Hundred, under hundred feet.
So it's not the whole wetland thing like it was written up before when they're doing.
Yeah, it's just the waivers, it's methodology for waivers. For way up today. Yeah, it's more better.
Like, I guess the concern I had, because I met, I was part of that group when that. So Mark Jacobs, um, what we were talking about, it said that to do the assessment would cost between four or five thousand dollars. For someone to do it, so even someone that wanted an addition, they would have to pay four or five thousand dollars to have that assessment done. And then I asked them, do they use the wetlands that were like on the subdivision plant from the floor like I do? When I look at people to say, you, you know, you're too close. And he said, well, to do the assessment, you would actually have to redeline it where the wetlands are, and that was going to be another four or five thousand dollars. So the state is just trying to make it so that it's reasonable, someone's going to spend eight to ten thousand dollars to come in and ask me to get ten feet closer to the, the edge of that wetland. When, if there was a way possible to get away from it, he would, or she would, or whatever. So they're spending eight to ten thousand dollars and if it's reasonable what they're doing, you still have to grant it no matter what the function is, you know, that's.
I think that, I agree, I share that concern, John, but this is a they're gonna go with the draft thing, if we want to say, use what we previously did before, now redo it, like you're talking about. That could be something we may as well define methodology when we.
I don't know.
You were saying that you use wetlands that aren't limited in revision four. We could say, use that as well, defining methodology.
All it's doing is the values of the wetland and not the location. So what that you talked. But it was, but, but, but Mark was saying was, you can't rely on that. If I'm going to do an assessment on the wetlands, I gotta make sure I know where those wetlands are, do it. And it's not even based on what's in today, you know, what was there ten years ago when the subdivision stopped.
Yeah, I hear you, but. I mean, he's come up with a methodology, he make more different methodology than that. You know what I mean, in the proposal. Sorry to give it back to you, John, but the first step is right here. That, that doesn't lock into a certain procedure, you know, you know what I mean? I, I share your concerns on percent, John, I'm not, I'm not just agreeing with your concerns, but I'm saying that that methodology has not been locked into yet.
So the one that was on the sheet might be a different methodology than what was on that original.
They might recognize. So I agree with you saying, but I think that says, we're going to come up with a methodology, and it may not be the one that you and I have an issue with.
I understand what you're saying, yeah. We'll see.
Can I, uh, can I come back in here?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think there may be some misunderstanding of what Mark said, John. A, a, and forgive me if I'm getting this wrong, but what I think Mark's position is, is that we want to avoid someone having to spend four or eight thousand dollars on additional wetland scientist work. Want to come up with something that's simpler, more straightforward, uh, that can be done rapid.
Was how much will this cost, and that's when he gave us that dollar amount, so.
I, 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 I don't have the transcript, you, you and I will have to disagree about what it is. Because I, I wouldn't want to engage him if, if that was actually his position. I've discussed that, and I'm sorry, I'm not prepared, because I have, uh, a note from Mark to that effect, uh, somewhere buried in my email. But that's not what we're talking about. You know, as a matter of fact, and this is slightly relevant, uh, the, uh, Association of Conservation Commissions is doing a workshop in Concord, a, a field study in which they're getting a bunch of amateurs, and I signed up for it. And other Conservation Commission and actually some Planning Board people who are going to go, um, into a wetland in Concord and learn some methodology in terms of evaluating, uh, functions and values of wetland. And, and it's we're not going to do four thousand dollars worth of work. And I, and, and again, I, I don't think there's any point in going back and forth on this. If, if we agree that we don't want that kind of outcome. And I'm saying this publicly, it's in the recording, that I wouldn't favor that kind of outcome. That's, that's not, that's not what I'm after.
That, that was just my biggest concern when I met him.
I, I, I hear your concern, and I have to say with Ron that I share your concern, except I don't. I share your concern that that would be a bad thing, I don't share your concern that, that will in any way come back before us to to have to shoot down, because that's what we would do. So that, that will not be our charge to Mark Jacobs.
Okay, so make a motion to proceed with this. Health and services. Well, just, just be, you can. With my hope would be down the road, the Conservation Commission, you know, can be bought more folks in wetland stuff than us. And I think it's good for us to collaborate on this, but I think ultimately we're looking for the Conservation Commission to be, give the recommendation for us, you know, the recommendation for us on these issues. I think the last one you gave on the young road was great, but some of them have been, you know, not so good on some of the, you know, on some of the waves, we had no comments from the Conservation Commission, they're off. So we agree on methodology, um, you know, we really look for the Conservation Commission to, you know, really focus on its methodology and come with a strong recommendation for the planning board. Because it's something you guys can focus on more than we can, you know, we, we run, we run light as it is. So any assistance we can get on wetlands issues would be very helpful.
Well, thank you for that.
It sounds like we should move forward with it.
Yeah, we should go.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with this, um, quest.
Back it.
Broke home, capello. I.
Andy, am I?
Go for your own. Alan, just lie. Alright.
So, uh, for exact one of you, Ken, the next, um, step will be issuing the PO to the consultant, and we can talk about it later. Or if there's someone else in the presentation, I don't know. I know you said you were switching over your role, I wasn't sure.
Well, why, why don't you and I talk in the next couple of days?
Okay, sounds good.
And work all that out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you again. Andy's ready with that motion.
Oh, I think I'm hoping you're good.
Uh, well, no, for the classics, I remember we were going to talk on there to vote. Ron to be our representative, and if we can have, if we can, we want two people, if they allow.
Well, one's going to be a citizen. One is going to be.
Or do you want to be a board member or citizen?
Doesn't matter to me, so, I, I got an email from Connor because I've been dealing with classic firm stuff. And I expressed interest in being on it, so right after the select. Like what people approved it, he sent me the email and I did my application, got it in. And then following that, Vanessa reached out and said if anybody's interested.
Planning board, I said, no, I'll reach out to them.
And I said, I actually already have my application in, so.
If nobody else wants to, I'll do it for planning board, but it.
Do we, do we know what the committee?
I had been in the dark about it.
I, I'm going to meet with Connor tomorrow, so I don't know anything yet.
He hasn't been, so I'm sure I'll get more information.
Ron's step was to see who's interested, um, the select board would start to think about like a maximum number. Then it was kind of left, let's see who makes an application through because because one or two people that would make it a little too cumbersome, maybe it's better to have a more, more people that are interested instead of trying to let them just go on it.
Right, that's how.
That's on, how many people actually apply, if you have thirty people apply, I'm sure they're going to want to cut it down to make it smaller groups so that you can get something done. But if only seven or eight people apply, then it's reasonable to have that group. If you have thirty applicants, probably.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you not going to be here for the next?
That's correct, that's correct. Well, I have to figure out who's going to be appointed to do this. Because we're just doing our appointment. Yeah, we haven't done that.
It's our next meeting, it's going to be what we did in accomplish at the last, which is the
CNA.
Subdivision, subdivision regulations, and then, um, have a look, something else.
It will be Rob or Jim, I'll try to get one of them.
Thank you.
And I had, uh, emailed Vanessa, I had talked to a woman who has a background in, in regulatory stuff, and she calls herself a regulatory nerd and loves it. And I said, you would be good as an alternate for planning board, and she watched some of the videos, um, but then she realized she has a family commitment from December to March. And I thought, oh, well, that doesn't work, and then I thought, well, Vanessa, does it work?
Well, as an alternate, I mean.
So maybe it does.
There's probably like I mean, at board members can't come anyways, like it's, oh, I feel like more merrier, we have five spots for alternates. I mean, and as you saw, like at the last meeting, because of schedule conflicts and what have you, or things happen, a full board member can't be here. The alternate, um, can be a full have a full board set of members.
Right, right. So I should go back and have another conversation with them.
Because if she has family commitments, as long as you have a quorum here, another member can be.
Right, I, I mean, I don't think she'd be available.
Yeah.
But, but it does leave then April through November.
But if she was here as an alternate, she could be.
Yeah, okay, so I'll go back and have another conversation.
Vote him, excuse me, always a full member, but vote him, thank you. Thank you.
We ready to make your, make motion to adjourn?
I second it? Oh, you made a motion?
Yep.
And I seconded it, okay, oh, you're, that's why you're waiting for me. Okay, and it's not even nine o'clock yet, capello.
I vote, hey, we can't fish. Oh, wow.